Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the March 12th, 2024 Planning Commission Regular Meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and following the live meetings link at the bottom of the city's homepage or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest to real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as "gudene," meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Next is roll call. Staff, will you please call roll?
Yeah, Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Yodowitz?
Here.
Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Vice Chair Tagney?
Here.
And Chair Davies?
I am here.
And for the record, sorry, Commissioner Lehman is absent.
Missing in action. Next, we have oral communications. Actually, sorry, we are joined this evening by Community Development Director David Loy and Senior Planner Joe Matier. Next, we will have oral communications. During this time, people may make comments about items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak on one of our agenda items, you will have an opportunity when we are discussing those items. If you have comments about items that are not listed on our agenda today, please line up now behind the lectern. If you are on Zoom and you wish to make comments on matters that are not on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the "Raise Hand" icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing star nine on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. With that, I'd like to open public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment during early oral communications. Feel free to state your name for the record. May we have the first speaker, please?
Good evening. It's been about two years since the city had, during the farmer's market, they had like an open process with tables and where you could come up with some questions. And they also had vision boards out that basically said, the vision board said, one of the things was a quiet neighborhood where people drove at the proper speed limits. And I approached the young staff, there was nobody in the senior staff here, and said, you know, that's not what I'm seeing. So can you please help me out here of who I should contact? I said, David? They said, no. I said, Karen, our city manager, maybe, but your representative would be going to the city council and the planning commission. So it's been two years now that I've written and I've spoken about this issue, how we don't have any enforcement at all when it comes to vehicles changing their mufflers. And it's getting worse and worse and worse. And the reason it's getting worse and worse is because the police aren't doing anything. And how this started out was when I went to the police department and the police officer took me out of the building into the parking lot and gave me the real story, how, you know, this isn't something that our city wants to do. You know, it's basically, you know, we got a lot of other issues and this isn't so important and there's not a lot of pressure on us to do this. But please, go to the council, go to the planning commission, and let it know that we need help. And so for two years, patiently, I've waited and spoke about this. And now we are, I believe, fully staffed. And I even had the city manager, you know, a month or two ago, say to me, because I was kind of giving her a hard time about the traffic issues as far as people running into parked cars, you know, hitting people. And she said, well, I do get some things on my desk or DIO, driving under the influence, or, you know, and I go, I hope you're not going to tell me that you're, you know, giving out tickets or fixing tickets for all these other issues with cars and exhaust. No, I'm not going to tell you that. So I had an interesting conversation with the police department. They seemed to think that, you know, that officer that gave me that information was probably wrong. But all this is based on data. Where is the data? You know, it's like, I don't want to hear somebody's opinion. I want to see the data. And the data, the reason we're not seeing the data is because it's going to back up what I have to say about this issue. So I'm just in shock that, you know, I can go over and over and over in this and nothing is ever done. And it does have, you know, we have people that get killed because of this. So where is everybody out? You just kind of like stand there all the time and do nothing about this? You never backed me up at all. So if you backed me up, then maybe we would get something done about this.
Thanks for your comments, Gregory.
Good evening. My name's Joanne McGarry. It's good to be back at the Planning Commission. I've been preoccupied at the city council, but sun is shining. I walked here because I no longer have a car. I would like to talk about three things usually when I'm up here in three minutes. So the first one, I guess I'll talk about is bicycling, because I'm going to rely more on walking and bicycling around town. I have continually discovered that we bicyclists are second-class citizens when it comes to parking. And bicycles don't look the same like they did back in the day, you know, the standard Schwinn two-wheeler and stuff. I'm in a big, huge trike. Other people have these cargo bikes. Some people have, you know, huge electric bikes with huge electric tires and all that. And I think we really need to seriously talk about sharing, not just the road, but sharing the parking slots with bicyclists to really promote our community moving into the future with fewer cars and more people traveling differently on bicycles or walking or tricycles or rolling apparatus, whatever. So that's the first thing, I guess. I've been trying to get the co-op to take those three parking slots out from in front of their store, the Arcata Co-op, and turn it into a really nice bike parking place. Secondly, I guess, is thinking about, as we plan things for our parks and our plazas and our different areas of public spaces, recognizing again that there's people who don't have a car, and some of these places are really hard to get to if you don't have a car, and especially if you have a kid, a toddler in hand, or a stroller, or an elder person. And I'm just thinking, we need to really seriously think about a subset of a transport system. I like to call it like the park-to-plaza-to-marsh and back type of concept. We're building an $800,000 playground up at Redwood Park. And there are families in this community who will not be able to safely get there to enjoy this $800,000 playground because there's no transportation for them to get there. So those are things we really need to start thinking about in our plans. And then this brings me to the third concept. I play trivia these days, and one of the questions was, what do you call the front of a building? A facade. And one of my coworkers reminded us of facade maintenance and how we do a lot of facade maintenance in our world and that getting into the inside of a building or the inside of a project or the inside of something is much, it's really important that we don't just leave it at the facade. Speaking of facades, the one at Sorrel Place is already looking bad. And what's going on inside, because I know somebody lives there, is also worse than that.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Commissioners. At some point, I would like the Commission to take up the Form-based code, specifically how the code addresses the linear park. As it is now, five, six, seven-story buildings can be built right adjacent to the linear park, which would cloud out the sky or the sun. As I've shown, even in June, if buildings were built on both sides of the linear park, it would get sun for less than two hours a day. I think this is a critical issue. And I'll thank you in advance for doing this. As some of you know, two weeks ago, I filed a public records request. It was the first time I've done this. I've wanted too many times over the last two years, but this is my first time. And it was revealing. My specific interest was, I felt that the way that the Commissioner Mayor was dealt with, her comments were dealt with a month ago at her last meeting, was, I would say, shameful. And I wanted to see if there's any correspondence between the Director and different Commissioners prior to that meeting. I found that there was. However, Commissioner Mayor had written, had forwarded her policy comments to the Director, and he had made comments and sent back comments to her. Now, this doesn't really concern you, but I'll mention it anyway. I'm not allowed to see those comments. I'm going to be working on this. They're considered to be part of a draft of what was eventually printed in the agenda packet. But the Director's lawyer's comments are not part of that draft. So we'll get to that, too. As always, you know that I'm critical, but I support what you're doing. I think you've honed a good plan. We're getting there. Of course, I'm critical. That's my nature. But I do support what you're doing. And I look forward to adopting the plan and seeing buildings built according to it. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments, Fred. Does anybody else in the gallery here wish to address items not on our agenda? Anybody online waiting?
No one online has their hands up.
Okay. Appreciate everyone's comments. As always, we all appreciate everyone's participation and input. We will now move to item three, which is our consent calendar, actually. Never mind. No items on consent tonight. Moving forward to item four this evening, which is public hearing. And we have two public hearings this evening. We will start with item A, approve a design review permit and minor use permit for a proposed multifamily development on vacant land at the southeast corner of 12th and I Streets. And prior to opening this public hearing, I understand we do have ex parte disclosures and other comments Commissioners may wish to make. Who would like to go first?
I can go first. I'm going to recuse myself. My residence is within 500 feet of the subject property. And while I may not legally be required, I think the prudent course would be for me to recuse, to remove any shadow of doubt of any potential conflict.
Okay. Thanks for that, Joel. We will wait till you to get into the back room before we proceed. Does anyone else have comments to share? Go ahead, Matt.
I discussed this item with Colin Fisk of the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to share? Okay, seeing none. Appreciate those comments. And Commissioner Yodowitz, we will let you know when this item is over so you can rejoin us. Can we begin this evening with a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening. My name is Joe Matier, Senior Planner with the City of Arcata Community Development Department. The assigned planner for this project for you this evening is a design review and minor use permit for the development of a multifamily project on a vacant property in the Arcata Heights Neighborhood Conservation Area. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission take action on this by adopting Attachment A of the staff report. That includes the findings of approval and the environmental review categorical exemption, a class 32, as you'll find in Attachment A, Exhibit One, the conditions of approval, Exhibit Two, and it's based on the application material that you'll find as, actually, it says Attachment B, but it's Exhibit Three of Attachment A. The project, as mentioned, is located in the Arcata Heights Neighborhood Conservation Area. It's a zoned residential high density. It's two vacant parcels. Each one is just under 5,000 square feet each, so it's a less than 10,000 square foot parcel. I have it highlighted in blue here. This is the two parcels as shown as one. I did highlight within walking distance, a commercial laundromat. The minor use permit includes a site exception to deviate by not providing any onsite laundry facilities. And so I just wanted to highlight that the laundry facility is just up the road, about less than 500 feet from the project site. It is kind of a transition area between the core downtown area. It was designed to have that residential high density, that more, you know, buildings in density, higher density in that core downtown area as we transition out into the more standard single-family residential development that you see further up outside of that neighborhood conservation area. This is a street view. Unfortunately, it's 2017. This structure was demolished in 2021. So this structure is, there is a property line that goes right about here that separates the two parcels that will be required to be merged once the project is, if it's approved. We do have some residences over here on this side, H Street. We're facing east at this, so it's on, the view is on I Street. We do have some multifamily structures on the side across 12th Street and just on the other side of this building as well on the same block. And then across I Street, there's also multifamily structures. The current design is, as shown here, this is the common property line that will be merged. It has an entrance coming off of I Street and one-way flow through, exiting onto 12th Street. They do have the diagonal parking here, one accessible parking space here, and there's a compact space here. This is an accessory structure that has enclosed and covered parking for bikes. And then it does have some private storage to meet the standards for multifamily development projects. It's consisting of one building. There is a slope from this corner down to this corner about 10%. Right now, you do see a gabion wall that provides for onsite parking that will be removed for this project. It has four studio dwelling units on the ground floor. And then on the second floor, which is pretty much of the elevation of 12th Street, and I'll get an elevation for you soon, there's going to be a two-story townhouse design with two bedrooms on the third floor. So the floor off of 12th Street will have the kitchen and living room area, and then there'll be stairs up to the second floor. This property did go through some geotechnical and fault evaluation. It's located in the Aquis Priolo Earthquake Special Study Zone. And it was part of a larger development that created the multifamily developments to the east. And it, so there was a, in the 1990s, there was a earthquake fault evaluation report that was done, and it cleared a portion of this site. And so the clearance was right about this diagonal through here. So this area was cleared for the absence of any active fault. There was also a slope stability study that was done for the project that included this property as well. And then later on, in 2006, a subdivision was done that created these two parcels. And because the previous fault evaluation report didn't clear all the area, they did do additional trenching over in this site here. The trench went this way. And they did clear again the property for the absence of any active faults on the site. This is the 12th Street addition, so you do have the entrances to four of the units here, the kind of the townhouse, I call it the townhouse design. And one of the conditions of approval recommended by staff was to include porch railing similar to these here on these units here for this porch as well. That would be something that I did pass along to the agent and the property owner, and they can discuss that as well. So this would be the view from 12th Street. As we measure the building height from this elevation, it is within the 35-foot height limit on this elevation here. This is the south elevation, so we'd be looking from the parking area to the north. And we have the studio units, four units down here. They have their private storage space and outdoor private space here on each of the units here, and then also on the upper level here. On this elevation, this portion of the roof line is 37 feet. It's estimated to be 37 feet by the agent. They are requesting a modification to exceed the height limit. The zoning district has a 35-foot height limit. And it's just for this portion of the building based on some excavation in the south elevation on this side here. Staff is supporting that site modification. We think that it's nice to have that steep roof pitch. It's kind of in line with some of the traditional homes that were in that area without really creating a false sense of history for that. You'll see that the building does have some horizontal siding. And then there's a mix of board and batten on these sides. And there are some architectural details for the windows with the window trim there that we find that is compatible with the neighborhood. The project does break up the wall massing and roof massing by having different roof planes and bump outs on there, and then the patio out on this deck. So it does add interest to the building and kind of takes away from that monolithic large building. It's about 5,282 square feet, the total floor area of the site here, or the structure itself. And then we have the east elevation on this side here. And then this would be the west elevation with the parking to the right on the west elevation. We did receive some public comment, and I do have an update on this one here. I did have two, a phone call, and then a community member came in to the office. They did not submit any written comments, but I did want to summarize those. One of the comments was, there was a concern of the way that the parking was, that those vehicles may have lighting impacts from those vehicles as they enter and exit the parking spot. And then also, they identified a utility easement that serves properties off-site along the south property line. And there is a condition of approval regarding the utility easement because we want to make sure that there aren't any impacts from the development of the accessory structure, landscaping, or parking areas on that existing utility easement. And another community member had a concern about the building height and the modification for that. They felt that they kind of wanted to set up a balloon to see what the 37-foot height was, but I'm not sure if they did that. This project did not do any story pool, so we don't, they could not see that. It's not a requirement for our zoning code, but they thought there might be some views block that they might have. And as again, I'm not sure if they're going to be presenting any oral communication to the Commission, but I did not receive any written comments regarding those two. There was a written comment from Colin Fisk regarding the onsite parking standards and the project possibly utilizing some state law provisions regarding some recent adoptions by the local regional transportation commission there. And I believe the Commission does have that email. I did receive an email this afternoon that I can share with the Commission, and it was regarding the lack of parking onsite. And there's some pictures that I can share with the Commission that the commenter provided. And there's some pictures that I can share with the commission that the commenter provided. And again, I'm not sure if that individual is going to present any testimony to the commission or not, but I'd like to really share their concern that the project of eight dwelling units providing seven onsite parking spaces was not adequate. It's just kind of the opposite of the comment number three here from the, you know, one of the mantras is kind of, let's house people instead of cars, and that is a difficult transition for our community and others as we move forward with that. There is the findings of approval as exhibit one that we recommend the commission adopt. It includes, oops, this is the wrong environmental finding. I do want to correct that. We're proposing a Class 32, which is an infill development exemption, and you'll find the findings does support that categorical exemption as well. We do have a recommended revision to condition of approval, B1B. It's just some cleanup language regarding the soils report. I did identify some of those previous slope stability and fault evaluation reports. There were some comments regarding future development that the city engineer wanted to ensure that were incorporated into the building foundation for the project. And then also, this, before you saw the structure that was demolished, so there were some onsite footings and things like that, so there could be some unconsolidated fill that we want to make sure is addressed. And also the fault trench, you know, we're not sure if that was backfilled with engineered fill. So we just kind of want to ID that. We do have some other recommendation conditions of approval. The parcel merger, I mentioned that before, the soils report we just discussed, the front porch railing we did, the compact space with the circulation pattern from the one-way traffic, there's a compact space on the, on the east side of the parking. And there is a little bit of a turning radius concern that we're, with some initial designs. This is almost, I think, our third site plan that we looked at, reviewed to come up with something that we wanted to bring forward to the planning commission. So it's just kind of maintain that compact parking space, because if you had an oversized vehicle in that space, there could be some impingement on that turning radius there. The state accessory dwelling unit law doesn't allow those units to be occupied for less than 30 days. So the intent that the state legislatures made when they passed those regulations was to really provide housing for our community members and not for those traveling in here intermittently. So there's a standard condition of approval for that one as well. The utility easement I mentioned earlier, that is on the south property line and provides utilities to the property to the east from I Street along the south property line to the eastern development. And then there's other standard conditions of approval as well. I did want to point out, I'm going to go back to the site plan. This is the compact space here. We do have the trash and recycling, well, solid waste recycling and organic collection facility here. The environmental services department had some comments on that that are incorporated into the conditions of approval as well. The landscape plan that was part of the packet was based on an earlier version of this site plan. You'll see that landscape plan will have the parking going in opposite direction. What we want to do and try to minimize cost to those projects when they come through is to just, I want to, like, the planning commission, hopefully they accept that as a conceptual landscape plan in that during the building permit review, when they submit that development plan, that they will include an updated landscape plan that matches the site plan. But essentially, they do have quite a bit of local plants, and they, they're really designed for this area, and they did pay attention to some of the water needs of those plants as well. So it's a lake, a local landscape designer that did that plan as well. And that is in your packet, but I do want to point out that it's a conceptual plan and does not match perfectly with the proposed site plan at this time. And then, just in closing, you know, staff recommends the planning commission adopt the action with the findings of approval, the conditions of approval, and they're all based on the materials that you'll find in Attachment Three. I know the director, I'm going to pass on a discussion about the Colin Fisk comment regarding state law that in certain cases would not allow jurisdiction to require minimum parking standards. I did discuss this with the agent, and they were in discussion with the property owner. I believe they are present for their, for this hearing tonight, and they can update the planning commission on their decision, how they want to proceed with the parking, maybe adding additional dwelling units and things like that. So at this moment, I'll pass it over to the director.
Thanks, Joe. Can you go back to the site plan? So I did just want to update, based on the CRTP letter that you received on this, that we've connected with HCOG and confirmed that they have adopted their local regulations. AB 2097 essentially allowed for jurisdictions to define high, high-capacity transit stops. That's not the exact word. Maybe Joe can help me with the term when he gets back. But the state law definition essentially focuses on headways of like 15 minutes that you would see in major, you know, in metropolitan areas. And so this new law that was effective this January, which was, of course, after the application was submitted, effectively eliminated the ability of jurisdictions to require parking or to set a minimum parking standard if you're within a half mile of a high-quality transit hub. HCOG identified-
It's major transit stop is the term in the-
Major transit stop, thank you. HCOG did identify the, a couple of transit stops in the city of Arcata, including the traffic circle at Cal Poly and our transit hub downtown here as a major transit stop recently. And so those have now been defined as such, and properties within a half mile of those sites are now subject to AB 2097. So what I would suggest you do, this is not optional for us. The state has identified that we may not set a minimum parking standard. And so the design that's come in here is actually underbuilt relative to the density that's allowed for by both our zoning code and state law. And you'd actually be able to get, I believe, another two dwelling units onsite. So what I'm going to recommend you do is if you approve this project tonight, that you also add a condition of approval that reads that the applicant or the property owner may submit for two additional units that are substantially conforming with the design elements in the existing building as approved, and leave that to the discretion of the director to determine that substantial conformance. It would mean, you know, a revision of the site plans and the other things that needed to occur as a result of that. But to have them come back and, you know, sit before you to have two units approved that, you know, essentially they have a byright ability to build probably is not the best use of your time. The salient issues that Joe identified remain whether or not the building is in its current size or if there are two additional units added to it. So I'd be happy to answer questions about that, but I think that's our recommendation.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, just along those lines, then are we to assume that any additional units would be where parking is now? They would not be contiguous with the, with the building as presented?
I am not sure if they will include parking or how much parking they would include. If I were designing the project, I would probably just tack on an additional two units, extend the, the site plan eastward, one more set of units, just kind of replicate the exact same, same plan. And then you'd be basically cutting off your through drive, and that would probably require a reduction in the parking if you had any parking at all on the site. It'll also mean changes to the solid waste and recycling. They'll need a larger area for that. It'll probably mean a larger structure for the bike parking that they've added in the upper right-hand corner there. And so basically, what I'm suggesting to the commission is if they decide to take advantage of that, and of course, we'll, we'll know more when they, when they speak tonight, but if they decide to take advantage of that, you leave it to the department's discretion to say it's still compatible with what you approved overall. You can certainly say, no, we want to see it back if it, if it's going to come back. And if we are going to do that, I'm going to suggest that we set a continuance hearing based on the interest of the applicant so that they can draw something for you to approve based on the existing work that we're doing.
Does anybody else have a question about the staff report before we go to public comment? Jeth?
Yeah, thanks very much for the, for the update because that's, that's a pretty different project than what we were looking at in detail. I, I had a couple of questions for you, David, about the, the staff approval should the project come back with another couple of units. Presumably, that would also affect the circulation within the site? And the entrance on one street, presumably that could also mean getting rid of parking onsite completely? Is that, is that an assumption that you're making?
I mean, I think it really just depends on where they decide to put the units and how they decide to reconfigure the site. Certainly, seven parking spaces would not fit on the site with, with two additional units. So there's going to be some kind of a reduction if they put the, the parking spaces, you know, parallel parking to make that a two-way so they can come in and out the same direction. You know, that, that's one alternative. So I just, I can't answer, but the, to your main point, yes, it's going to affect the circulation, and they would probably need to reduce the total number of parking spaces.
Okay, the other, the other, the other two things are kind of trivial, and it's, they're both things that the applicant maybe can respond to. The first one has to do with the laundry facilities. I'm just wondering if the two-bedroom units would actually have the possibility for the occupants to hook up their own laundry facilities in the apartments? I, I get that a person in a studio probably has no need to not walk down to the laundry on the corner. Somebody, you know, potentially with, with a lot more laundry might, might feel differently about our exception to the requirements for that. So I'm just wondering if the hookups would be possible for occupants to provide their own facilities? And the second one is also something the applicant might be able to address, which is bringing that roof line down to the 35 feet so that, in effect, it, it wouldn't trigger the exceptions at all. Is that something that would be either possible or desirable at all? I got the design pitch discussion from the document, but was wondering how you were seeing that design within that 35-foot limit?
Are there any other questions about the staff report? Okay. Thank you for your questions. I would now like to open the public comment period for this item. The applicant will have the first opportunity to speak, to present their project. As per usual, the applicant's presentation will not be timed. After the applicant, members of the public will have, each have up to three minutes to provide comments on the project, and the applicant will have an opportunity to respond to public comments at the end. If you're in person, please feel free to line up at the lectern after the applicant's presentation. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand by selecting the raise hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing star nine on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. Feel free to state your name for the record, but first, I would like to invite the applicant to speak to this project.
My name's Sarah. I'm not sure if I'm unmuted yet.
We can hear you.
Okay, all right. So I'm the applicant for the, or the agent for the owner, I'm sorry. I did the design. There's a long, long history, decades long on this property and this project, so we're really excited to bring it forward tonight. A lot of the discussions that, that we just had with Joe and planning arrived today regarding parking and the fact that we can't have, you know, no requirement for parking by this city. I think in short, the presentation was pretty thorough for the current project. We don't need to dig into the past. I really just asked if the, the commission has any questions, and then I can kind of respond to those. The two last questions that I heard regarding laundry in the townhouse-style units, yes, we do have the ability to put a laundry closet in those four units. We get into a little bit of a sticky area because the ground for studios are all required to be accessible and adaptable, so it's a little tricky if we provide laundry in some units and not the accessible ones. But the short answer is, we do have room in the townhouse units for laundry. We did not propose it originally just because of the vicinity to the existing laundry facilities, and we've used that in the past in some of the complexes, not this one in particular, but in some of the complexes in the past, it's closer to walk to a laundromat than to an onsite facility. The roof line and the height, it, it kind of comes into play with the slope of the lot and the aesthetics that we're going for to keep in, you know, in keeping with the, the older style, not to try to replicate the style of the old house, but just to complement it. So the, again, the short answer, yes, we could reduce that height. I did have conversations with Joe Matur, and I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, that the, the house that was demolished was actually over height as well. So we actually wouldn't be asking for more than what was there originally. And it is just a portion. It's the peak of the middle section that would be over that, so I don't think it's view-blocking. But we could reduce the, the roof slope. It would change the aesthetics somewhat, but it is possible. I think that was the majority of it. There's a lot of conversation, so I'm happy to answer any questions. I did talk to the owner. Personally, I feel that parking in Humboldt County is of somewhat importance. I don't think that we can eliminate all of it. We can't simply, with this current design, we would not be able to tack on two additional units without redesigning it to some extent. We do have the eight base units if we're, and we've looked at this a couple ways of planning, but if we're looking at it currently without parking requirements, we have eight base units. We could potentially add two more ADUs. I think at this point, given that we've, the property owner has invested decades of work into this project, that I'm not sure we would want to pull the project or continue it to go back to get two more units at this point in time. If this was something that came up when we started or in the first several renditions of the project, maybe. So I'd kind of ask that we continue the project and ask for a, you know, vote and hopefully approval tonight. And I did, again, discuss with Joe Matur that maybe it's an option if we were to revisit adding two more units, could we do that with the staff's discretion, not come back to public hearing? I think that was the bulk of it, so if you guys have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. One question is, would the owners be interested in adding a couple of additional units if it meant that it could be staff review and not something that would require another trip back to the planning department, uh, planning commission, rather?
Potentially, potentially. There's, there's a few other factors, personal factors, that I won't divulge tonight, but there's a possibility that we would. When we originally had the conversation this morning after the parking question came up, we were uncertain about the density. And, you know, if we admitted parking, are we getting double the density? The short answer is no. We're already at maximum density with or without parking. So it's really just the two state ADUs that we would be allowed. So there's a possibility that we would want to entertain that. But it, it came on such short notice, honestly, we've, this happened late morning, so we haven't had time to really wrap our heads- heads around that, but we wouldn't want to jeopardize the approval for two units. Now, if it was eight more units, we might say, hey, let's just continue this and have this conversation later. But for the two, I think we'd want to push through, and if we had the time to think about it and go back to just staff and not public hearing, then that would be something we might consider.
Got it. And David, if the, or Joe, if we approve the plan as submitted, and that at some future date, they decided to add those ADUs, that would still be an option?
There's a couple of things that come into play. The state ADUs are approved administratively, so it would just be a building permit, and we'd conduct that design review at the staff level during the building permit plan review, so that aspect wouldn't come back necessarily. What they're talking about is, right now, there's eight units, and we considered six of them to the base density, and then two bonus ADUs. If they wanted to, they could request that the planning commission consider this to the max density that's allowed in the zoning district now, and give them the option for the state ADUs later. That would affect the condition of approval regarding the occupancy of the state ADUs to greater than 30 days. And then, you know, we would probably then look at site modifications to it, and I would imagine that to get two detached state ADUs on the property, that the site plan would be modified, and that we would do that through normal building permit review. The solid waste and recycling, there's, you know, potentially fire access, and then the engineering department does do encroachment permits and circulation patterns. So they typically don't do a lot on-site on private property, but they would be commenting on any of those issues.
And does staff, is staff recommending that we do approve this as max density to keep that open in the future?
I think, given the provision that we can't have a minimum parking standard, that would be the option that we should go. I think that allows us, because at this point, yeah, I think that would be a recommendation that the staff would appreciate the commission consider, because that kind of sets a precedent for this new standard for our community.
Got it, thank you. Does anybody else have questions before we go to public comment?
Yeah, Joe, you said that the ADUs would be detached?
I mentioned that, because that's the language of the state accessory dwelling unit, and that, hearing from what the agent, Sarah Atkins, mentioned, is that it would be difficult to attach it to the existing structures. So I'd mention detached. It could be attached as well, I imagine.
It could go either way, then.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. If anyone in the public would like to comment on this project, please step up to the lectern. Feel free to share your name.
And we live a half a block from the project, and it's been my experience over the last several years that there's inadequate parking on the street with all the multifamily units that are in the neighborhood. The parking in front of this lot, and these are my photos, it's, and this was taken in the afternoon when people are still at work and having to come home from work, all this space along the street is completely filled with cars parked. And with this unit coming in, it's been my experience that the apartment complex across the street usually has two cars per unit, and that's going to cause, and impact this area even more so when this unit goes in, because I can't imagine that a multifamily unit is only going to have one car in this day and age, and what I've seen in this area. These units that are back here, far back, those units are taken up with these cars parked along this street. I watch these people get out of their cars and walk over there. Across the street are single-family dwellings, and we're a half a block west in a single-family dwelling, and we're always impacted by the numbers of cars that are parked on the street with these people in those far apartments. And across the street is another set of apartments with eight units, also impacts the street. So I can't imagine that it's going to get any better for those living in the area. And across the street here are single-family dwellings, and on this corner here is another single-family dwelling, and then we're in the middle of the next block, and that whole block is our single-family dwellings. So that's my concern. And I noticed that they aren't required to have a minimum amount of parking spaces on their property in this development, and I think that's going to negatively impact the neighborhood, and I just wanted to make that clear to the planning commission. And it's going to impact the quality of life in the area also. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else like to speak to this? Feel free to line up at the lectern, so that we can get a sense of who wants to speak to the project. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. I am speaking in favor of this project. I think it's a good-looking project for the site. I prefer the steeper-sloped roof. I believe it's okay to have it be 37 feet, and I kind of surprise myself, because usually I'm against all kinds of things. Joe, could you pull up the plan, plan map there? I do want to say that the idea of bringing this, approving the two additional units and having that be a counterapproval, this has nothing to do with the applicant. It's not called the applicant. It seems that the applicant doesn't know whether the owner wants more units or less I think it's a bad precedent. This has come up before, the matter of a project coming to the commission and then being modified, even as a counterapproval, you know, something that the ADUs would not be required to come back to. I think it's just a bad precedent, bad policy on the part of the commission. So I think that if this were approved tonight, and then the client, the applicant wanted to bring it back, it would be like a 10-minute procedure before the commission. I think these things should be seen. It's not okay, for me, to look at a plan, look and say, yes, but this will be added, or this could be added. It won't take much of your time. What I wanted to show here, this is eight units, 12 bedrooms, potentially 12 cars, seven parking spaces, meaning we're adding five to the neighborhood. If this were in the gateway area, it could be larger. It would have a maximum of two parking spaces. That is the maximum it could have for potentially 12 cars, or it could have zero. Or it could be four stories. It could be 16 bedrooms, 12 units, 16 cars, a maximum of three parking spaces. In other words, that would put 13 cars out on the streets. If it didn't have cars, it could literally be twice the size if it were built in the gateway area. It could be four stories, it could be 28 bedrooms, have 28 cars. The maximum, according to the gateway code, is six spaces. So I'd like to see this get built with whatever spaces it is, seven car spaces or three car spaces, and see how it works in the neighborhood, and it'll give us a really good clue as what's going to happen in other areas of the gateway. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments, Brad. Next speaker?
Hi, my name is Peter Daggett. In 2004, Ed Rowan applied for demolition permit to tear down the house and start this project, and you can see what a chilling effects decisions of city council, staff, design review have on development in Arcata. 20 years later, we're looking at a project that could have provided housing for the last 20 years at a reasonable rate. In 2005, I was involved with Ed to try to save the house that was on this property and relocate it, and that was denied. And then in 2021, finally, the Landmarks Committee decided that the house had lost its integrity and could be torn down, and that happened. So I would like to say that I am here in support of this project. I think it's aesthetically pleasing. I think Sarah, who I have worked with before, has put a lot of thought and work into the design. I don't see an issue with approving it at a 37-foot height. In fact, I'm surprised that, based on the current event of you guys to allow four-story buildings in residential areas, that you're not encouraging them to add another story onto this property. It would be a great demonstration of what it would be like to have four stories in a residential neighborhood. I hope that you will approve this, and I'm referring to a letter that, from 2004, that I got, that said, "To build an apartment building upon this big lot, similar to the one he has already built, which is the property that's just to the east, will be like bringing the suburbs into the center of Arcata. This will help destroy the character of Arcata, which I believe we should maintain." That's probably an old opinion now, an outdated opinion, and I think this is a good design. I have a commercial property in the North Town area that I put eight parking spaces in. It has two residential units and more commercial. At the time it was approved, something was happening with the city and the parking requirements, and they tried to get me to abandon my parking. And I can tell you that my parking lot is full most of the time, and the streets around that neighborhood are filled full most of the time. There is four-hour, two-hour parking and zone parking on all streets there, and I think, even though we're trying to push for no cars in the city and more bikes and pedestrian use, that parking is a critical element of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. I would also say that I support this project, too, and I think Sarah's done a good job on the design, and I'd like to see it built. I don't have an issue with the height, because, you know, it's basically a direction that you really want to go into, and it's going to be your first example of something at this height, which is probably in line with a lot of major cities in California that I've visited. They tend to, like, top out, like, at the third-story mark, so I don't really, I don't support anything going to four stories from the standpoint, I think that's pushing a little too much, but this will give the example to the public on what something on this scale looks like, and, you know, so, you know, otherwise, you've just got an example at Sorrel Place and Plaza Point of what four stories and three stories and a little bit bigger mass. I would, I also was involved with this project in a little bit more abstract way, because when I moved here in 2017, and my brother felt a little unhappy with, you know, hiring an architect, trying to save the house, and also a wind situation with apartments being built there, and I encouraged him to go back to the city with a different plan. And I'll have to say that the staff was, you know, they were kind of very embarrassed about the pass and were apologizing to them, but they also had, like, a view of that time that, and it was kind of like over their dead body where they're going to let the house be demoed. So I'm a little confused on how things changed so quickly in that area, and when the decision was made for it to be demoed, a historic house, anybody up there know what the next step should have been? Because there was a step that you should have done, and that was, this is in your own rules, that you're supposed to try to recycle as much material, and I'll tell you, that's a settlement style, and the house that I'm working on with my brother is a settlement style, and I've been looking for a long time. You can't buy that at the lumber store, and I was a little shocked when I walked by, and it was, like, halfway demolished, and I stepped in there with the folks that were demolishing it and tried to, you know, talk them into giving some of the siding to do the repair, which would have made you guys look really good. It would have looked good for everybody all the way around, and they said, sorry, we're going to recycle it, and we'll charge you some money for it. Turns out, everything went to the dump, so it was a total failure from the standpoint of, you know, what you were supposed to do from that standpoint. So I'm not letting that get into my way of supporting this project, but there seems to be, like, you know, I don't know what's going on with a historical house as far as rules, but there seem to be all over the place at different times, at different years, and not very consistent.
Thanks for your comments.
Hello, my name is Joanne McGary, and I come up here all the time and I say my name. And I haven't looked at this, I came back to this planning commission meeting without looking at the agenda packet or anything, but it would just be really nice for people to identify themselves more fully, I think, especially if they're zooming in, because people who are watching this later on, on Access Humboldt or whatever, I just really think it's a responsible thing to do, so we know who the people are and who the owners are. I mean, are they out-of-town owners? This is all interesting information, in my opinion, about our community as we move into the future. I mentioned, interestingly, about facade at the beginning of the meeting, and I think this is a beautiful type of facade that's trying to fit into the neighborhood and, you know, have historical connection in a lot of ways. But again, with the washing machine and the dryer and those types of facilities not necessarily being designed in the interior, how people live in these beautiful faceted new structures is something we really, really need to consider. So I live in a place that was an old Victorian that got split up into five different units, and we all have one washer and dryer that we couldn't all use on the property as a means of dealing with that need of people, so they don't have to schlep to a laundromat in a car, especially. And so this brings me to the car issue. There was a development that you discussed up at Valley West, and we talked about, are they going to put roofs over the parking lot, and maybe solar panels over that, and are they going to have the ability to install electric charging stations? And I'm not hearing any of that in this plan right now, and maybe it's something that's already set, and I'm just not aware of it, but, again, we're talking a lot about railings and heights and deep ceilings and, you know, pretty front views and all that kind of stuff, and then we're talking about cars, and they're all lining up to block that on the street. So I think we need to really be much more focused on the future of Arcata, hopefully with less individual cars, and really start designing places that are future-thinking. So that's, I guess, all I wanted to say. Just announce who you are, so we know what's going on, and I'm going to head back and check out that place in person, so I can kind of get a sense, but, yeah, go deeper than the facade.
Thanks, Joanne, for your comments.
Hi, my name is Dannie Tomlin. I live at 1289 J Street here in Arcata, two blocks away from this. Parking is a problem, and cars, people want to take them away. I am now 75. I'm not going to be riding a bicycle, and I'm not going to be walking in sheets of rain to try and get to anywhere. So the reality of my age people who do live in this neighborhood, it's an older neighborhood, I may be one of the youngest ones around, but not quite, and I feel like we're not addressing the people that we have in this neighborhood. We're addressing people from HS, or Calhoun, and new young families that are coming in, and we're kind of ignoring the people that are here right now, like myself and my husband, who just hurt his back and hasn't been able to drive for six weeks, so I'm taking him into physical therapy. You know, it's, things like that I don't think are addressed when you say, get rid of the cars. He's never going to ride a bike again. He can't get on a bus. There is not adequate, they say we have these transportation hubs. How do you get to the hub? You know, I mean, the reality is, we don't have that infrastructure. It's not San Francisco, and you can't go out to the corner and catch a bus and have somebody help you get on it. It doesn't happen here. So we really have to address that. I mean, why do you think, well, one of the reasons I'm also a part of Life Plan Humboldt, besides it got taken out away from where we were, is why we're in McKinleville. You know, we don't have to deal with this kind of issue as an older person, and I think that's sad, and we don't want to lose that in Arcata. So those are my issues. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else in the gallery here care to share comments?
Good evening. My name is Kelly Carlin, and I own the property.
My name is Kelly Carlin, and I own the property directly next door to it that's going to be going up. I kind of had a few questions kind of for the designer maybe too, but my, some of my concerns are the landscaping, the plants that are planted. If we had the landscaping plan up there, I could tell you what I'm thinking. Well, my house is just five feet off that property line, so we have a five-foot separation. It's pretty tall, you know, it's a story and two-thirds at least, and I need to be able to get in there and maintain my building, and these plants are already, it's hard to say exactly, but encroaching a couple feet. Put a ladder up that goes 16 feet in the air, 20 feet in the air, at five feet's a very steep ladder, but you have to maneuver around plants. I have a little problem with those plants. Like that plant back there further, that's fine, it's kept on their property. So that's one of my concerns. And my other concern is all the cars parking and their lights. My concern is how tall is the fence going to be to block the lights? Seven or eight cars, and I believe it goes the other direction, right, Joe? The car parking comes in from I Street, not from the way it's...
It does.
So it's reversed of what's on there. So those light, these cars parked here in the front, my house is set back off the street, 20, 25 feet, those lights, if there's no solid type of fence, is going to shine right into our living room. So that's one of my concerns also. And my other concern is the water that coming off the parking area. How is that going to be controlled? They're much higher than we are, so my concern is also the retaining wall that's going to be put in there. What is that? Can it be something that is non-permeable, so the water is caught by some type of drain system that takes the water into the storm drains or whatever, or into some kind of mixing box or something? So those are some of my concerns. The lights is really one of my big concerns and those plants. Of course, a fence would help if it was a, you know, at least a four-foot fence. And is this, one of these guys a designer that can answer any of these kind of questions?
She's in Montana.
He's in Montana?
I'm online if you guys, I'm actually native Five Generation Humboldt, but I'm here if you guys have a question.
My question is about the fences. Is there a solid fence?
I'm sorry, the public comment period is for comment only, it's not for dialoguing. The applicant will have an opportunity at the end, and the planning commission can certainly ask your questions if they want to have those answered.
Is there anybody waiting online to make comments?
I don't see anybody at this point.
Okay. Appreciate your comments very much. Does the applicant care to respond to any of the questions that were raised by members of the audience or planning commission that haven't been addressed?
I can certainly speak to those. I just kind of jotted down some notes, I can go through those, and if I missed any, you're welcome to ask those. Some of the questions, I'm sorry, I forgot the lady's name regarding electric and EV and solar. So the new, the current building codes require all that, and there's really no room for discretion. So the energy calfs with the January change have made it almost impossible to use gas. So most of these multifamily units now are all electric. Will most likely 99% be all electric on these. The green building code requires EV-ready stations if you have parking, that a certain percentage be EV-ready. And then solar is required and all new electric, so, or I'm sorry, an all-new residential. So all of these units will have a minimum kilowatt size system required, and that will be built into the building permit, no discretion on that. As far as parking versus no parking, I agree with most of the public speak. I don't think that we eliminate all parking, especially in Humboldt County, parking's always going to be necessary, no matter how much, we don't want it to be. My mom lives 45 minutes out of town off the grid. There's no way she's going to have a solar car or an EV electric car. She gets home, she can't charge it because they don't have sun, you know, during the winter months in their solar system. So it's just not practical. It might work in San Francisco, LA, we're always going to have cars in Humboldt, and I think that it's necessary. So no, I don't know, I can't tell you 100% sitting here if the owner wants to add two more units, because this just popped up a few hours ago, and I, we've been working on it for at least 10 years, and her dad worked on it for decades before, as Peter pointed out. So at this point, we do want to pursue moving forward with the, with the project, you know, the eight units that we have. We think it's a good project, we have parking, we think that's important. Adding laundry in the townhouses is not an issue. We do kind of put ourselves in the corner with accessibility laws and codes, but that's not an issue. I think that was the most of it. As far as landscaping, we use Genevieve Schmidt on this, and she's a very highly respected landscaping designer in Humboldt and especially Arcata, so I take her recommendations with, you know, very great seriousness. The trees, you know, sometimes we use symbols that are a little conceptual. Now, her landscaping plan has to be updated anyways, because we flipped the parking after we got through the first round of review with planning, and had a second review after DLO left, and then, you know, we kind of looked at the parking again with Joe. So that has to be updated anyways. Those trees can probably be pulled back. Again, a lot of things on, you know, landscaping can be conceptual, so that's not a deal breaker. As far as lights, I don't see any windows on the north side of those houses. As far as the parking along the front, we have one ADA stall that would be in the front yard, may or may not be occupied. Realistically, when someone parks, they pull in, turn their car off, and they go inside. So if you live in the city, you see lights. I live in the country, I still see lights when people drive down the road. Can we put a four-foot fence? Absolutely. Again, not a deal breaker. As far as water runoff, building code standards have this all built in, we're not allowed to run water off into a neighbor's property. It all has to be addressed onsite. That's all designed by an engineer with the MS4 and the LID measure, so that's, again, a non-issue. That will be addressed as part of the design and building permit by an engineer, and specifically with the site, because of the slope, obviously, we're going to have a grading plan anyhow. I think that was the bulk of it. If I missed anything, you guys are more than happy to ask.
Thanks for that. I think that was pretty comprehensive. I appreciate everyone's comments. I would like to bring the discussion back to the planning commission and just check in to see if anyone on the planning commission has any further questions, statements, or is someone perhaps ready to make a motion?
I'd like to get a point of clarification from Joe about the state law that was just Can you explain to us, just partly for the public comment, how much leeway we even have on this subject about parking?
The city cannot mandate any parking on the site. We can't, we can't say that our code requires X number of parking spaces in this particular case.
That's a good point of clarification, yeah. Just for everyone to understand, it's a state law that is, that the project is responding to that says we cannot require parking. So it's, it's something that's, that we're aware of, but it's not the planning commission or the, or the city that's imposing that, or rather, not requiring it. Did anyone else want to make a statement, or is anyone ready to make a motion?
I have a statement.
Go ahead.
What are you going to?
Go ahead, Abby.
Okay, so, in looking at the project, I agree we need more housing. As somebody who doesn't have laundry in their facility, I'll say just taking laundry down my stairs into my car and driving to the laundry facility, Emerald City actually, is, is pretty tough. And the way that we are talking about the laundry facility being 500 feet away is concerning, because that means we're asking someone to cross H Street, which doesn't have a crosswalk right there. So they'd have to go up H to the corner of Wildberries right there, cross Wildberries to Carmelus, because that's where the next crosswalk for G Street is, and then go down to Emerald City, which is actually over 1,000 feet. And the grade of H Street and G Street are not, not easy to summit, even on a good day without laundry on your back. So I would urge the commission to reconsider approving this laundry facilities exception, especially if we're talking about there potentially being more people in this, in these units, and not enough parking for those folks who don't have the ability to walk their laundry to the, to the facility. So that's my comment.
I think if I understood Sarah correctly, there was an ADA complication there in that units have to provide the same facilities to ADA versus non-ADA, and that there was some complexity there. Is that right, Sarah?
Yeah, it's just kind of a gray area, because with multifamily, all the ground units have to be accessible and one has to be adaptable. Our second-story multifamily units, we do have easy room to put a laundry facility in a stackable hookup, not that they would have to provide the units, but we can provide that in a closet easily. The ground floor units, which are the accessible, adaptable units, are smaller because they're just the footprint, so we're at about 400 square feet. But the gray area is, you know, we provide the laundry upstairs, but we don't have laundry downstairs. We're asking for an exception for just those units. So that's the tricky part for me, because ADA often, you know, is just a litigation issue. As far as providing laundry, we're not opposed to it, it just gets a little more difficult because in those 400-square-foot studios, for an ADA, it has to be side-by-side, not stackable, and so it does eat into the space that we have to work with, and that was the only complication. You know, it just, we really don't have room downstairs, and if we don't have it downstairs, it's tricky to provide it up, but it's not impossible.
I guess just a point of clarification, they're asking for an exception to not have a shared laundry facility, isn't that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, and it is certainly the planning commission's discretion to authorize that or not. Most multifamilies do have, instead of laundry in each individual unit, they have a laundry facility, small laundry, that everyone has access to.
So to be clear, what I'm, what I'm saying is, the applicant should be required to have one shared laundry facility area, one washer, one dryer, and should the tenants that don't want to use that, want to go to Emerald City, let it be, but yeah, that's my recommendation.
Got it, thank you.
So I guess I'll, I'll say two things. First, I really like this project. The one thing I noticed when I was originally reviewing the plan was that it had an awful lot of parking, and that half of the lot was for parking. And I think to Commissioner Strickland's point, you know, without the parking requirement, there's maybe some more room for like onsite laundry, or bicycle parking, or any of these other things that we're interested in. So yeah, that's all I have to say about that.
Judith?
Yeah, I, I would be willing to approve the project as it's designed, even with all the laundry hassles this evening. I'd also be willing to offer the applicant a continuation to another hearing, since they probably haven't had enough time to consider the alternatives with less parking and potentially additional units. But it doesn't make sense to offer that if what they really want is just to approve the current project tonight. If they were to think for a minute and take the offer of continuation to another hearing, I would want the amended design to come back to the planning commission, because what we would be seeing probably would not be a small change in the design, but actually quite a major change. And since it came to us for design review in the first place, I, I think we should have an opportunity to review the actual design that would, we'd be asked to approve. So I'd be happy with going either way. I would not be happy with not approving it tonight, but then having staff approve a very significantly different project later without bringing it back to us.
Dan, anything to add?
Yeah, I like the project, and I completely approve of the steeper roof to get, even though it encroaches in the 35, or goes beyond the 35 feet. I think it's cleverly designed in that it feels like two-story neighborhood appropriate on this north elevation, and on the south, they've tucked in four extra units in the slope profile. The laundry thing, I'm, this is an interesting conversation, but I hadn't thought that that was such an issue, but it makes sense. It's been a while since I've had to go to a laundromat, so I'm out of that loop. It does feel as though there's plenty of room within that, perhaps bicycle parking, extra building to eliminate one parking spot. That's the one Joe said might have turnaround problems or backup problems anyway. And I would, on the bigger picture of, well, actually, I was feeling like if the clients don't want to put laundry, they're kind of probably going to lose some potential applicants or renters, because it's just a nuisance to not have laundry. So that's on them. However, I think it is fair to say, why don't we just stick to code and provide laundry? Perhaps the upstairs units get the tucked-in machines, and the downstairs four units share some kind of community space out there by the bicycle parking. Other things, I like the landscape, I like the trees. If they need to be trimmed to support the neighbor, that's normal city living. If a fence needs to go up, if it's not code, I don't want to layer it on to this project. You know, a neighbor can build a fence, any, but either side can build a fence, and the fence itself might then be an obstruction to putting up a ladder or accessing, you know, it becomes another impediment, so that would be something to be thought through as well. I would like to pass this project as presented and not concern ourselves with whether or not they're going to add the ADUs. That's on them. I'm fine with what I see here. So my recommendation is we just move forward with this as presented, and the one caveat to just add that it meets the bonus density as Joe described, I don't remember the terms, in the conditions approval, so they have the options.
That sounds awfully close to a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion if we're ready.
Would the motion include laundry facilities provided?
It would, yes. I would like to eliminate their exception from the laundry requirement.
I would second that motion.
Okay, so let's make a better motion, though.
We have a motion to pass the project, but not approve the laundry exception.
Yeah, and if I could just clarify, just so that you have information before you make your, your decision. I heard a couple of options, one potentially having laundry in the upstairs units that would allow for them, and then potentially having a separate shared laundry for the ones that can't accommodate. Joe has confirmed that the total number of machines that would be required for the density is two, and so you could potentially still authorize an exception to that requirement if provision is made for the upstairs units, so that they're only required one, that would be a smaller facility and a lower cost for them.
I'd like to still see the two, the washer and the dryer, and let the applicant decide what they decide, what they want to do upstairs, whether or not it's cost-effective for them. But I don't think that the rest of the tenants should have one or, one or fewer, because somebody upstairs has one, just that they can't use. upstairs has one, just that they can't use. Just isn't... Anyways, thanks.
So it's your motion, Dan.
Are we okay with that? I mean...
I just want to clarify, when we talk about the number of laundry facilities, so it would be, the standard is one washer and one dryer per every five units. So they would be required, because they're more than five units, they would require two washers and two common dryers onsite.
And the word "common," the word "common" is in there. So is it, do we have to create a special condition if we're saying, if they want to put separate units in all the other four upstairs units and have common for the downstairs units, do we have to describe that or will that just play out?
You know, the code doesn't specify that if you provide half the units and you have now less than five that don't have them, do you need a common one? But I think it's up to the commission to kind of balance that.
I think the answer to your question is no, you don't have to specify. Yeah, you're telling them they need to meet the code.
And then, Joe, as far as conditions, there was a couple of things that you brought up that sound like they need to get included in this motion.
Go ahead, Matt.
I guess I'm just curious if the applicant has thoughts on this laundry discussion or, you know, that they want to share.
For sure. I can chime in if you guys want me to, no? In light of the fact that we can eliminate parking without an issue, not that I want to, our accessory building that's tucked up there in the southeast corner, that was originally like a storage garden shed with a half bath. And then as we worked through code requirements, secured covered bike parking, personal storage, all of that stuff then got tacked on and that shed got eaten up by those requirements. So I think that I can speak for the owner. I'm more than happy to eliminate the compact space and extend that and have some sort of laundry facility in there, whether or not we provide it in the townhouse style units or not. The challenge again is just that we have a sloped lot and we have to get ADA access, I'm sorry, to the laundry facility, but I can make it happen. I'm not worried about that. So I think, the question is, are we agreeable to admitting our request for a laundry exception and finding laundry onsite? Yes, I can do that.
Okay. A motion. I move to approve a design review permit and minor use permit for proposed multifamily development on vacant land at the southeast corner of 12th and I Streets. In the conditions, well, with the conditions as presented, except for the laundry requirement, which we're eliminating from the conditions.
And I will second that motion.
And just to be clear, that was taking a SEQA action first, adopting the Class 32 SEQA exemption.
As presented, yes.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next, I appreciate, before we move on, everyone's conversations, input, clarification, discussion. I'd like to move on now. Thanks, Joel. We missed you. We are on to our next business item, which is general plan and gateway code environmental impact report public comment hearing. This item is on our agenda to provide, this item is on our agenda to provide the public the opportunity to speak to this decision-makers directly regarding the general plan and the gateway code environmental impact report. We are not deliberating on the EIR or the general plan as commissioners. This item is solely to provide the public an opportunity to comment. We will not be responding to comments. To this end, I would ask the commissioners to hold their thoughts until we enter formal deliberations and review of the EIR, which is to say, it's not appropriate for us to comment or discuss this issue now, so let's not do that. Staff will summarize the comments made by the public. Can we keep it down, please, in the gallery? Thank you. Staff will summarize the comments made by the public for including inclusion in the final EIR. They will not attempt to record comments verbatim. They will be summarizing the comments as they understand them. Any public member who wishes their exact words to be included in the record should submit written comments to staff. The EIR public comment period runs through the end of business, 5:00 PM on March 18th, 2024. You may submit written comments to Community Development Director David Loyah at Dloya@cityofarcada.org or to his attention at City Hall, 736 F Street, Arcata, California, 95521. With that introduction, I will ask if any commissioners have any clarifying questions, and if not, I will open public comment. Do any commissioners have any clarifying questions for staff? Okay. We are ready to open comments on the draft EIR.
Good evening. My name is Cody Fredis. I wanted to come here and show my continued support for this plan and this project. The planning commission and the council have done a lot to accommodate the public's concerns with safety and environment on this project and moving it forward. And I'm hopeful that that continues throughout the EIR process and forward as the plan, as the gateway plan and the process moves forward as a whole. This is an opportunity for us to address the housing shortage and address workforce development in this community. And I just, again, for bullet points, for the sake of people taking notes, that myself as an operating engineer, as an on-staff member of the operating engineer, support this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
My name is James Becker, and I'd like to cede my time to Fred Weiss.
Good evening, commissioners. A month ago, I spoke to you. I said I am appalled by the general sloppiness, the errors, the omissions, the actual misstatements and false statements that are contained in this document. I wanted to repeat that. I have prepared about 35 pages of comments that I'll be submitting. In the meantime, you can, if you like, see my annotated table of contents on arcata1.com, which gives you an idea of the things that I'm looking at. There's about, there are hundreds of annotations there. The, as I understand it, the commission's going to be bringing this up after the response to comments. Is that correct? If not, I strongly request that. I'm going to give some examples of what we see in this document so far, to give you an idea. I consider not providing any comments because it's really just an environmental impact report. It's probably not going to be read after it's approved, but I couldn't do that. As an example, there's a view of the gateway area, and it says, quote, "This depicts what a full build-out scenario in the gateway area could look like from two locations at the top of the hill." It's not a full build-out. It shows five buildings. It could be a build-out over the 20-year period, but that is not what it says. It says, quote, "Approximately 10 parks are located within a quarter mile from the gateway area." It then lists five parks. But one of the parks is James Creek Linear Park. And I would, curious whether anyone in this room, perhaps the exception of the director, knows what James Creek Linear Park is or where it is. It turns out, this park exists on paper, does not exist in reality. You can't walk to it. There's no public access to it. And it's not on James Creek. It's actually on McDonald's Lou. But that's another error. I'm okay, there's four, but it says there's 10 parks. There's not. There are two maps of contamination. One is on, neither have a page number. One is in the table of contents, the other is not. The other, the second is in the middle of a 1,173-page appendix. They both show open and close issues. It has images of schools, so you can see where the schools are relative to the contamination sites. It's missing a school. The two maps show different sites. Some that are on one aren't on the other. Most importantly, and this does say this in the draft EIR, a contaminated site can be considered closed only for the original zoning. If it was an industrial site and there was contamination, it's considered closed for industrial purposes. It is not considered closed for residential purposes. So in theory, all these contaminated sites could be suspect to being brought up, opened up again. That statement is in the draft EIR, but the effects of the statement are not discussed. Another example, I mentioned at a previous meeting that there's an illustrative plan for the Barrow District that shows the need for 2,625 parking spaces, which is about 17 acres of parking. That can just be removed. Why it's in there at all, I have no idea. The vehicles traveled, vehicle miles traveled section asks for a 4% improvement to what we already have. That should be much greater than that. In general, the plan, a lot of portions of the plan look like they're written by low-level employees and not really checked. And that's what I'm doing, checking it. In the section on housing estimates for the infill opportunity zones, as you know, the gateway area is 500 units over the next 20 years. The Craftson Mall has about nine acres of vacant land. Valley West is a pretty small portion, has about six acres of vacant land. Downtown, they call for 60 units. In theory, they call for the North Coast Co-op section to be redeveloped. In theory, Union Town Shopping Center could be redeveloped, and in theory, Valley West could be redeveloped. But you have an idea of the size of Valley West, Craftson Mall, and downtown. They're not large. It calls for 500 units in Gateway. It calls for 1,340 units in those other three opportunity zones. It's physically impossible unless the units were 200-square-foot microunits. So it has things like this. It shows Cal Poly's requirements as 40% or 50% of their needs will be supplied by our increase in housing here. Given the numbers that they supply in this document, it works out to 70%. So is it 40 or is it 70? I'll be supplying this information. Staff and the authors, GHD, can go through it. I hope a lot of this information is changed, updated, to be factually accurate. Next.
Thanks for your comments.
I would say one of the most important questions that I put in the EIR, because I was one of the few that actually during the scoping period put this out, is that theme that I've been talking about quite a bit, about the noise element. And promises were made at that point that, you know, since I'm bringing this up and, you know, it's just terrible, that you would actually do this study so that you could actually prove that I'm wrong or I'm accurate. And I'm just like in shock that this has not happened. I've gone to Plan West, you know, they were going to do it. They just, you know, they just needed the okay from the City of Arcata to do this, as was promised, you know? And, you know, as someone with the historical house that went through this process, certain things were promised, you know? We have single-family, single-pane windows that are mandatory to be restored. This is what Joel's house too, that, and the fact that you don't have the same kind of protection and that. And, you know, I've had conversations with the city that you're inside the house and you can't even have a conversation with somebody on H Street because you can't even hear them because somebody's going by. And the fact that you can't even do a study, I mean, basically, your study is from 1997. That's what you're going to use in the EIR, which we don't even know what the results were in 1997. I mean, it is just unacceptable, you know, what you're passing off in this EIR. I mean, I don't even know what to say. It's like, I've waited all this time because I actually thought you would do this. And, you know, there'd be some action here. But apparently, this is all really embarrassing because you act like you care about all these issues, but when I point out that you're not complying with state law, and I say this to the, I say this to the city council too, because they swear to take an oath, you know, and how about the police, you know? It's like right on the website, we need to comply with the laws of the state of California. So you're not interested in doing this one most basic thing that started out as just a noise complaint and now has moved into this project. And there's a reason why you don't want to know it because it's going to like impact and it's not really that difficult of a thing to do to try to change it around, but apparently you can't do it. I would also address that, you know, it's just sort of like this Lego 3D thing that we were supposed to get to get a feel for what the gateway was. It's kind of like very disappointing, what I've seen like in the New York Times when they, you know, hire an architect and you can see what Manhattan, in my look in the future, is finding areas to develop. It's just very disappointing.
Thanks for your comments.
Hello again. Joanne McGary. So everybody knows that's watching. I shared earlier that I have not been around and been involved a lot of late in the planning commission, and I have yet to look at the EIR, and I'm glad to know I have till the end of the day on March 18th to look at it and submit some comments. So I will do that and I will hopefully get others to do that. I just want to share that I have been told I have to move out of where I'm living at the end of May because they're going to refurbish it. And so I have a dilemma in who I am and what I can find to live in, in this community. And I have three criteria that's really important to me as an older woman, living on a fixed income, is something safe, something sane, and something affordable. Since the beginning of this whole discussion on the general plan and the gateway plan, I have been a very harsh critic of just quantity of housing units that we're talking about. And I just really want us to all remember, who are we and who do we want to be in our small rural college town in the north coast of California? So I'm going to be looking at the EIR and giving you some comments about it. I totally appreciate those who've been following it and offering their input ongoing, you know, Fred and Gregory particularly. Not that I always agree with them, just so you don't know, I'm a pretty independent thinker on these matters, but I also want to share that I'm one of these people who wants to stay living here, but I don't know if I will be able to, both in terms of a sane place to live, a safe place to live, and an affordable place to live. So I'm going to be looking at this and you will be hearing from me. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. Una Smith, Humboldt County Association of Governments. I am the Senior Regional Planner. HCOG still supports the general plan update and the gateway code, and the EIR is very much like the EIR, prepared for our regional transportation plan in calling out that the kinds of policies that reduce vehicle miles traveled and make accessible, I'm sorry, active transportation more accessible are in line with the kinds of proven practices and policies that change the needle as climate solutions. So we appreciate all those policies, and we will be turning in a written comment letter by Monday. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Do we have commenters waiting online? Okay, try again.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect. Hi, my name is Kelsey Martin. I am with the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities, also known as CRTP. I wanted to share our strong support for the general plan update and the gateway plan. These are unquestionably now the most bike, pedestrian, and transit-friendly land use plans in the region. We also submitted a letter with detailed comments on the draft EIR, but the big picture is this, these plans will reduce further environmental impacts in Arcata and the surrounding region because of its region because of its design to specifically reduce the amount of driving for future residents of Arcata. This means fewer crashes, less climate pollution, less noise, and lower toxic tailpipes emissions. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your comments.
That's all the public comment we have.
I appreciate everyone's input. We all appreciate comments and everyone's involvement in discussing the draft EIR. We have one business item this evening, considering outstanding general plan recommendations, and we'll start off with a brief staff report.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I will be exceedingly brief. I do want to point out a couple of materials that have been provided and oriented to the staff report quickly here. We are picking up on recommendations that have come from public members or planning commissioners over the last couple of months since we put out the December draft of the Gateway Plan and the General Plan. We've tried to collect those as they've come forward in the table that's in your staff report as Attachment A. Along with that, we've collected some of the public comment that we've received in written form. Some of the public comment that's contained within Attachment A, never had any written communications, we took those orally. And then in Attachment C, you have the Planning Commissioner comments. Commissioner Yodowicz submitted comments before the staff report was drafted, and I included those in Attachment A. And then due to some communication issues, Commissioner Mayer was not able to get comments to me before Attachment A was developed, but I do have her comments included in the table here that I will plan to edit as you move through your decision-making process tonight. To support your decision-making process, I included the framework that we used in early 2023 that was modified a few times by the Planning Commission at the time to effectively go through all of the material that we had to go through in the timeframe that the council had outlined for us. And I borrowed from that to prepare for you a draft framework, what I'm calling version 4.1, because for all intents and purposes, it is the same as version four. Oops. Got to be able to edit it here. Same as version four, but really tailored for your discussion tonight. Part of the reason why we did this is because at our last meeting, I think we didn't articulate the, the framework that we would be using for the purposes of going through the conversation last time. This gives you an opportunity to consider it. I did have copies that I handed out to each of you individually in front of you, and there are extras here if anybody in the public is interested in reviewing those. So in summary, staff would recommend that you first start by reviewing this framework. I believe it's basic enough to help you to go through the comments that you have tonight, and I hope that there will not be amendments so that you can skip right to doing the business of making those amendments. But certainly, we have this in Word version here, so if we want to modify this framework, we can do that before you get into the discussion, primarily because I think it's really important for the commission to have an agreement around how you're gonna move through these, these decisions, and to have that explicitly agreed to ahead of time. Again, all of your agreements will be based on majority opinion. What we're striving for is 100% consensus, but you do need to move through the material. And so if you get to a point, and the Chair will manage these, these discussions, if you get to a point and you have a majority opinion on something, that, that will move you forward. So if you have any questions about what you're doing tonight, oh, I guess one other point that I wanted to make that CRTP did submit a letter February 11th. Some of these items were discussed at your last meeting, but not all of them. I did not incorporate these into Attachment A, but I have gone through them, and I have staff recommendation for each of the items. So at, at the end, if you want to come back to those, we can, we can address those, or if there's, if there's time. Okay, so with that, I'd like to turn it back over to the Chair.
Okay, thanks for that, David. I'm going to open a public comment before we deliberate and provide recommendations, but before that, I would like to discuss this process a little bit. The last time we considered general plan modifications, we adopted the framework process that we have attached to our staff report tonight to get through decisions efficiently. The process is designed to quickly identify areas where there's consensus and move those items forward without further discussion. We have a large volume of policies to get through, and we simply cannot reasonably expect to have conversations and lengthy deliberations on each topic. To facilitate discussion, we adopted a series of straw polling techniques like negative polling, gradients of agreement, and en masse voting to make sure we could cover the material in a timely fashion. In our last meeting, I did not take the time to fully articulate this process, and I think that led to some misunderstanding in the public and perhaps among commissioners about the legitimacy or nature of the process. So I want to say that one of the things that I like most about our time together at the Planning Commission is that we don't agree on everything. That makes for better discussions, and I believe it leads to better outcomes. But the way we make decisions is by majority decision, and each one of us at times will find ourselves in the minority, and it's important that we understand that. And so the thing that's important to me is not who agrees or who doesn't agree on any one item, but that we all are in agreement about the process we're using to get those, to those decisions. That's what we need to do. And when the majority makes a decision that results in a decision, that is by nature what we're trying to do here. That is how this planning commission works, it's how the city council works. I understand that individual people on the planning commission may have, find themselves in the minority, as I have myself at times, and find that disappointing. I realize that the public sometimes doesn't agree with the way that the planning commission decides, but the way the planning commission works is we make decisions by majority vote. And that's the way, that's the way this has to work. So my goal is to support the majority voice in, in all of this, and wanted to just talk about it a little more so we were all a little refreshed on that. Before we start tonight, I do also want to make sure we have buy-in on this process. As I just said, staff has outlined a voting process that mirrors in many ways the framework that we have all previously agreed to use. I want to make sure we all agree to be bound by this modified framework for our discussion tonight, and so I want to know if there's anyone that is not in agreement with using this process, or are there any proposed changes to the process that anyone would like to suggest before committing to it? Judith?
I have a question about the order in which things are done, and I think that that may have led to our issues at our last meeting. One, one of the concerns is at what point a commissioner can make a pitch for a proposal, and here it appears in item number five. Is that correct? But it does appear that an item that comes up for a pitch in number five could previously be eliminated from consideration through other means.
I, I-
In, in number four.
I understand your point. I think an important distinction is that sometimes we end up getting proposed comments in sections or amendments to decisions that we've already made as a body. So as a group, we've made a decision, and then any commissioner may at some point bring back for a second or a third bite at the apple, something that we've already decided as a group. And I think that is, that is a, that is a different matter altogether, and, and because I'm sensitive to this, and not only so that we're clear as a planning commission, but so that the public is aware, the way that parliamentary procedure works on this is a matter of timing. And, and actually, the, the language is that a motion to reconsider must be made at the meeting where the item was first voted upon. A motion to reconsider made at a later time is untimely, which is to say, if we make a decision, it's final. We're never gonna get to a point where there's not gonna be new information coming in that we can always commit, that we could always possibly reconsider. And I think that that is ineffective because there's no end to that. And, and the parliamentary procedures there are quite clear that a motion to reconsider, a decision that's been made, at a later time is untimely. The body, however, can always vote to suspend the rules and, by a two-thirds majority, allow a motion to reconsider to be made at another time. So there is a process by which, if we have made a decision as a group, that if we want to revisit the decision that we've already made, we would first have to vote to suspend our rules by a two-thirds majority, and then move on to a vote of a motion to reconsider. So in answer to your question, I think when someone makes a proposal and we're actively discussing something, that's one thing. When we've made a decision and then we're coming back to an item that we've already decided on, then it falls into a different category, and I think that might be part of where we're at.
May I respond?
Please.
Your explanation there didn't actually address the question that I was asking. And your references to parliamentary procedure, I'm not sure they make sense here because this entire process is actually a process of straw voting and doesn't necessarily abide by parliamentary procedure in the first place. But nevertheless, what I was asking about is the, the order in which items are taken for polling, or the commission as a whole can decide that they're not interested in hearing any items, which is what happened last time. And so there was a short list of items which had been previously submitted that the commission never had an opportunity to hear pitches on. And there was no opportunity at that time to counter that or repropose that in that session. And it appears that the order in which we have items three, four, and five doesn't necessarily remedy that. So I'm asking for an explanation of where pitches can take place and where they can be prohibited.
I appreciate that. I think I understand what you're asking, and for me, again, it comes back to last time, there were comments submitted that were for items that we'd already made a decision on. So while you, the comments that you're referring to hadn't been pitched, it was for an item that we had already made a decision on.
There were a number of comments in there, I'm sorry to say, that we, that did comment on items we had made decisions on, but of the list of items that I wanted to pitch, only one of them related to anything that we had made a decision on. And I was not able to make any of those pitches, and I'm sorry about that, because I think it undermines the process that we had adopted and which we were not observing.
Okay, I understand that, and that decision was made by the majority of the commission. The majority of the commission decided they did not want to revisit that. So I, my hope is that by taking a little more time to talk about this framework, we can go through this with less confusion than we did last time. I think staff, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I think I understand the question too, and if I could just address where I think, you know, each of these bullets fits into the process. For items one through three, and actually for items one through four, that addresses policies that are identified ahead of time, that you have in your packet, they're on this list, and the idea would be to take one motion that would adopt all of the items in one action. Many of these are very small changes, and what you would be doing by that action is concurring with staff's recommendation. If you don't concur with staff's recommendation, before we take that voting, you would say, you know, I want to remove policy whatever, because I don't concur with staff's recommendation. And then you would go through a voting process. If you have a majority of commissioners who already, you know, that you cannot get a majority of commissioners that want to remove that item to talk about it, then the item will stand. So this is working sort of a little bit to streamline the work that you've already done in preparation for the meeting. If you fully concur and you are not feeling like you'd be swayed by, you know, any deliberations on the topic, then you would not vote to remove that item. If you feel like you want to hear more, or you want to, you know, talk about the item, or you're uncertain, then you would agree with that person and you would remove that item. So if you have a majority of members who wish to remove that item, in this case, it'll be four, since you have six, you know, six in attendance, then that item will come off the list. You go through all, every, each, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, you're talking specifically about Attachment A here, correct?
Attachment A, for example. This could be applied to other, other ideas.
And, and here's the rub, and I think this is what Judith is getting at. If, if I say I want to take item GA-XF off, do I get to give an elevator pitch right then, 30 seconds or something to say why? Or do I just say I want to take it off, and then nobody hears anything from me about the why?
No, I think you should make-
And there's a scrouple.
A very succinct why. I think we should take this off because-
Does that satisfy Commissioner Mayor on, on process right there? So there would be an opportunity for a very succinct elevator pitch on why, just on Attachment A, you would be removing an item for discussion?
Yeah, and certainly if a commissioner says, okay, well, before I make that decision, I want to hear why staff made the recommendation they did, you could also say, staff, can you very succinctly tell me why you have that on there the way so that you as a commissioner can decide, do I vote to remove it, or am I okay leaving it on and just moving forward and getting into the other material? Does that make sense?
That would make sense going forward. That's not what happened last time.
The policy, or bullet number five, I'm proposing to strike. I've made a couple of changes here looking at this. Bullet number five, I'd propose to strike policies that have no counterproposal. These aren't, this was a holdover from the process where we were providing information weeks in advance, or a week in advance, and you had time to, to develop counterproposals. But this shows how you can, you know, work through those discussions once you've pulled them off. Once you've gone through the, the policies that you would be adopting en masse, you'd then move on to this more formal and complicated process of doing a pitch, having counterproposals, going into these various side channels, depending on how the conversation goes. The other change that I made was, when I removed some of these, the, the numbers changed, so I, I changed those back to reflect the right letter that you'd be jumping to. So I think that, I think there's two things- So I think that, I think there's two things going on here, just to be real clear, because there's a lot that just happened. One, this modified framework allows you to move through the material in a way that supports the majority vote, allows the minority the option to say, I think we should talk about this and this is why. And if those items do not garner a majority support to talk about them, then they're considered and the motion that adopts them en masse. There are some other complexities because not everything was on attachment A, and we can get into the detail on that when we get to those items.
Is everyone clear and ready to move forward with this framework? So can you take us into the first?
Okay, so I am going to track your conversation here. This is an updated sheet that has the comments that came in late, with the exception of all of the CRTP ones, some of the CRTP comments you had adopted in your last meeting. And so what I'm going to suggest you do is you start with the idea that you're going to be adopting en masse, everything from on that table, from CM-5E to the new policy labeled PFX, obviously with the exception of the, the items that you adopted at your 213 meeting.
Actually, I think we should, should we do public comment before we?
We should.
Get into this.
We should.
So let's hit the pause button there.
Okay.
Okay, I appreciate everyone taking a look at that. I do want to do public comment. So if you're in person, please feel free to line up at the lectern and state your name for the record.
That is what we're looking at.
Go ahead, Jim.
Hello, once again to staff and commissioners. I wish to address issues with policy CM-5E7 of the circulation mobility element in relation to L Street Rails Trails Corridor, which states as follows. Number seven, in general, retain the current total linear feet of Class 1 trails within the city, even if the current facility must be realigned or relocated to other routes. In limited circumstances, the city shall retain discretion to allow the applicant to demonstrate removal or relocation of the Class 1 section would improve active transportation access and connectivity. This language was lifted from GA-7I. My recommendation to planning commission is to exclude the L Street Rails Trails Class 1 Trail from policy CM-5E and honor the wishes of City Council to abandon the KNL couplet and to designate the L Street Rails Trails Corridor as a linear park. Regarding Commissioner Mayor's comments prepared February 13th, 2024, Planning Commission meeting, but not discussed that evening in relation to CM-5E7, standard, subsidiary standards in LUC should indicate the limited circumstances in which the city would allow developers to move a bike trail and specifically how developers would need to do it. Demonstrate removal or relocation of Class 1 Trail section in that it would somehow improve transportation access and connectivity. These policies need to be flushed out because it potentially prioritizes developers over active transportation and in the case of the Gateway Plan, contradicts the emphasis on active transportation. Commissioner Mayor also references PR-2D, Community Health and Parkland Planning, page 3-41, and PR-2E, Trails Improvements, P342. Plan should note that L Street Linear Park will be a part of the Arcata Rails with Trails Corridor and the Great Redwood Trail. I support these recommendations and also encourage the City of Arcata Commissions and Committees to include in the plan for the L Street Linear Park and L, to be a part of both the Gateway and the general plan. Prioritize L Street Linear Park Corridor through dedicated easement and frontages and the sound policies related to building siding and step backs. It will be receiving the tributaries in the form of multiple paths and trails throughout the gap in the city. As I have previously stated in the past, the L Street Rails with Trails Corridor will be the welcome mat for the Great Redwood Trail and also part of California Coastal Trail. It will serve as both car-free transportation route and a place for respite and recreation to Arcata and travelers alike. And that's me enough to say, thanks.
Thanks for your comments.
Good evening again, Gregory Daggett. I wanted to respond to what Scott had to say. And, you know, I'm kind of a little confused about this because we, we all learned our history here. It's actually the minority that's the most important in our government, how it works. We have a system where you go in front of a judge and a jury, one person says no, you know, doesn't, no conviction. We have a, we have a senate, senate in here in California, I think our population is 39 million. North Dakota, it's like 600,000. You only get two senators from each state. Our whole system was set up so that you could question the majority. Otherwise, the majority is going to ram through without having too much of a complaint from anybody. I mean, we had slavery and not too many people were complaining about slavery, only a few people in the beginning. So I think we sort of went down the wrong road a long time ago when we had a city council that actually was a little frustrated, didn't understand the process, and actually gave you a deadline, I think it was like in July. And then immediately after that, all of a sudden, we get all these rules. And one of the rules was for the public, that you're going to basically knock out our chance to verbally comment on all of this that's coming up in front of us. You were, we were allowed like two minutes in the beginning and then we had to sit here like zombies and just listen and not respond. So that was a really bad direction you went into. I don't know that we have even had a chance to, to speak, whether it would have really changed, but it had a really reflection on how you guys were governing and it wasn't very good. I mean, what happened in the past and when we've done the same process, where these same rules in place where, you know, you had to quickly get through? I mean, it was, it almost like was a way of, I think David even made a joke about this, when you were kind of muscling some of the minority here with the amount of time, you know, there was going to be a timer, I think for Judith in the beginning, and David pointed to us and said, how do you think they feel, you know? So it's, it's sort of this whole process that isn't quite as democratic as you think. And I would say, even all this important things that we see up here, where is it on the like of the website from the standpoint? We have a homepage and it says up and becoming new things that are being addressed. You would think that this would be number one on the homepage. And we have like articles from two years ago, from like, you know, come to this meeting in October. You're not even like making an effort to like let the public know. And, you know, I mean, you, you'll put an ad in a newspaper and say, check off the box, we completed this. But in reality, you don't want people to know exactly what's going on because there's going to be a whole lot more people in the audience and they're not going to be happy with all these things. So unfortunately, you didn't go in the right direction of democracy.
Thanks for your comments.
Good evening, I'm Fred Wise. First, thank you for taking public comments at the beginning of this discussion before you have your discussions. At previous meetings, public comment has been after all the discussions that occurred and after you've made your decisions. The, it's been pointed out that the, to say that a decision is made as a majority vote, that's fine. But to make a decision to not discuss the items, that is not fine. The items are said to be reconsidered. I view it as honing, improving the policies, not reconsidering them. I don't think we've had a case where someone wanted to actually reconsider a policy. What the chair read is parliamentary procedure, it's for a motion and decision. And I will agree, revising a decision made in that manner would not be appropriate, but that is not applicable in the process that we have here. We, you have dozens, perhaps hundreds of policies, they can all be improved until a point where you decide that you're happy as a group. The amended framework is still not clear. It is an improvement. It speaks to the en masse approval process for items that are likely to have majority support for the totality of those items. It does not speak to the case where there's an en masse disapproval of the items, which is what we saw a month ago. I would like the commission to make a commitment to hear all items by any commissioner. It may seem like a revisiting, it probably is not. I think in general, you are in agreement on this process. As a somewhat of a side, you may familiarize yourself with the 10th man principle, which is the idea that any single person can bring up anything that is contrary to the group. It leads to a better discussion, it leads to a better process and a better result. You have been doing that. In the, in, when you were using the framework previously, it was working well. I think a month ago, it was a departure from the framework. I appreciate the revisions, the amendments. I don't think further amendments are necessary. I think that things are much more in agreement now, as the law appears. But I would like to see every, any commissioner who wishes to bring something up, at least have their minute or two minutes. In terms of the need for time, I think that argument is specious because last two weeks ago, you did not have a meeting. You said that there is nothing on the business, no, no business items. This could have been then, or other conversations about Gateway. You skipped that meeting, maybe you needed the break, I don't know. But to say that you don't have time is not called what of my text.
Thanks for your comments. Do you have anyone online who'd like to weigh in?
We do. Go ahead, PC.
Hello, this is Patricia Cumbianica. And yeah, I'm also in agreement with the other speakers. I think to, to skip over items for discussion is kind of concerning. Some of those items are brought up by the fellow commissioners, but also some of those items are brought forth by the community members. So I think the fact that they aren't discussed is, is problematic and it doesn't bode well if you want a democratic society. So the commissioners' straw vote in your last meeting was, it blocked any discussion. And I ask, how can you make a decision if you block the discussions? That is what a lot of us found to be problematic. I fully understand that not all of the commissioners may always be in full agreement, but only after there's some discussion. That's a disservice to the community and fellow commissioners. We were told by the Development Director that the prior date that was supposed to be held, a planning commission meeting, was canceled because there was not enough items for an agenda to discuss. So my question is, well, really, what happened to all those bicycle rack items that kept being put aside to discuss at a later date when there was more ample time? I'm afraid that those bicycle items have been stolen, or those bicycles have been stolen. But, you know, they went to a bicycle chop shop and, which unfortunately is the community development department and Chair's decision. So a full meeting could have been created by these items alone and Commissioner Mayor's items to be discussed. And that should have been the last meeting that you guys canceled. So anyways, a little bit very disappointed and it's not getting better. It's just, I keep shaking my head. So, thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Patricia. Anybody else waiting, David? Sorry? As always, appreciate everyone's public comment and participation. Let's bring this back to the commission discussion now. I would like to start with the policy recommendations in the table that were in our packets. I'd like to take all or as many of these in one vote as we can. To be clear, we would be voting to support the staff recommendation presented in the table. If a majority of commissioners wish to remove a policy for discussion, we will take that policy out of the mass action and consider it separately. So, starting from CM-5E and running to PFX, excluding the policies that we have already made decisions for, does anyone wish to remove a policy? Matt?
The second policy, well, it's not a policy. It's the second comment on table CM-6. And then, sorry, I just lost the number. The comment on policies AQ-2C and AQ-2D.
Okay, hold on, CM-6.
There's two comments on CM-6, it's the second one. And then also, there's comments on policies AQ-2C and AQ-2D.
Okay, let's take these one at a time, if you don't mind. So first, CM-6, table CM-6, I've got it highlighted here.
Okay. So the public comment is to remove Class 3, we get into this double negative problem with these. The public comment was to remove Class 3 bicycle routes from the table. The staff recommendation is do not support Class 3 routes used on low-trafficked roads, provides support to a more robust bike system. I shared with you all an article about how Class 3 bike routes are actually less safe often than just having no marking on the road. This is like a sheriff, right? It's just paint in the middle of the road saying, ride your bike here. And that Class 4 bike routes, where you have a protected separate bike lane, are far safer both for bicyclists and drivers. And so I would urge us to really push for Class 4 bike routes over Class 3 bike routes. Thank you.
Can I ask a procedural question? Is that our 30-second elevator pitch?
Yeah, so then.
And now we're deciding whether or not to pull this item?
I tried to be really quick, I'm sorry if I was too long.
Yeah, so now we, I'm looking for a vote of which commissioners would like to pull this for further discussion. Okay, so, hold for discussion.
Next one?
So the next one is policies AQ-2C and AQ-2D. Staff sort of partially supported this one. AQ-2C and AQ-2D. It's on packet page, let's see. Packet page 33, it is the second to last one. My main comment here is idling causes poor air quality is sort of a mis, misrepresentation of the air impacts of cars. And the other article I shared with you and blog post talks about how policies to reduce idling have ironically actually increased poor air quality emissions. And so if you think about it, like a freeway has no idling, but it's not like a nice place with good air. And so just always encouraging more cars running through doesn't actually improve air quality. So it's taking out that sort of balancing and having it really encourage reduced LOS. Sorry, I'm not good at making super quick elevator pitches, but that was my best attempt.
Yeah, polling for who would like to discuss that one or is? Okay, polled, sufficient votes.
That was all mine.
Do we want to go through them all and get polls and then adopt what we can on that and then go back and revisit?
Yes, yeah, just to reiterate, since your mic was off, we'll go through all of the policies for each person, pull them all off, and then adopt what's left.
Okay.
I'd like to.
Thanks, Matt. Dan, go ahead, yeah?
Yeah, CM-5E.3, page 35 at the bottom. And I'm not sure if it's just this one. One of the speakers referred to the rail to trail along L Street Corridor or Linear Park. I just look for clarity on this and I, I don't have it right now. So if you guys wouldn't mind just fleshing that one out, I'd like to hear it really fleshed out. Are we losing any Class 1 trail? Is it going to stay right in that exact footprint or not?
Does commissioners that would like to discuss that item? Joel?
Sure.
Okay. Was that it for you, Dan? Did you have other ones? Abby, do you have any that you wanted to poll for discussion? Joel?
No.
Judith?
I'd like some clarification on D2B, near the bottom of page 35 on Von Nevers.
I would like that too.
Yeah, please pull that one as well. Do you have more to pull, Judith?
Clarification on PF 5B, second to the last on packet page 36. And I think that actually might have come from either... Okay, good, so you can clarify. Great.
We have a majority of members that want to pull that one?
Can you repeat the number?
PF 5B.
PF 5B. And this was just when I was checking this. I hadn't realized that they came from Joel's suggestions.
I think my email is somewhere in the packet as to those two policies.
And we, as a group, discussed it and chose shall, right?
No, that has not been, neither one of those has been discussed. I'm happy to elaborate if...
Okay, thank you.
If the commission would like me to.
Actually, your recommendation was to change May to shall, not to change shall to May.
No, I believe PF 5B, if I remember it correctly, says that the city shall accommodate providers of private education. And I wanted to change shall to May.
Would the commission, as a whole, like to discuss that issue?
Can we just say whether or not we support the change right now?
Well... If you support the change, then do not remove it from the consent.
Support the change.
Okay, so I think we're leaving that as is, is how that looks. Okay, so now we're going to go back to the top and one by one discuss... Oh, no. First, we're going to, okay, all right. Given the fact that we've polled all the items that we want to poll for discussion, are we in agreement with the rest of these items with staff report, and we can pass them as a bulk group?
Yes.
Yes.
In favor?
How official of a vote would you like on this?
I'm just looking for agreement from everyone that they're okay with it now that we've polled these items. Okay, so the remainers pass. And now, let us use that list and go, take us back to the top, and let's have each commissioner talk, well, I guess we can just discuss. Everyone's given us their initial pitch.
Okay, so we're at policy AC 2C and AQ 2D. And I believe this language came from the letter from CRTP, which is in your packet. If you want a little more detail on that, I can read that to you. But I believe Commissioner Simmons pulled this one, if you wanted to reflect on what change you want to see happen there.
Yeah, so this is in the air quality section of the general plan. And there's sort of an outdated idea that you should reduce congestion and have faster-moving cars in order to protect air quality. The idea being that like a car moving quickly by you will protect you from the air quality of it. Decades of that policy has actually led to worse air quality as more cars move faster through more places. And so I think the suggestion here was to not try to treat congestion as an air quality issue, right? Like, don't encourage more driving in order to improve air quality, because it sort of doesn't work that way. And I shared with you all a blog post and also a research article that talked about this effect of, it's called induced demand, where if you make it easier for more folks to drive, you encourage them to drive more, that adds up to more air quality. I'll also just point out that new cars that are either electric or have an engine that shuts off automatically when you're not moving, don't idle, right? They don't have an air quality issue when they're not moving. And so this, it's even less true now than it was back in the day that idling is bad for air quality.
Matt, it says...
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to address that right now. Thank you. I want to just continue this discussion. I think the point where we left off was, what was your proposal as a change? I understand the issue that you had with it.
Yeah, so instead of a balancing, which was staff recommended, just not considering congestion as air quality.
No, that was my question, really. Thank you.
Okay. Planning Commission in favor of this recommendation? Joel, Judith, where do you lie?
I don't particularly care about the language. I do have issues with saying that congestion is a good thing for other reasons, but they didn't show up in those particular policies.
Go ahead, Joel.
Yeah, I think I read, I think it's the blog, I didn't read the research paper, and I found the blog convincing. But my question is, will the actual language come back to us to vote on?
At this point, I'm not sure that I have language. And I think what I wrote down in my notes in regards to this on CRTP, this letter, which is on packet page 39, I wrote to have them propose an alternative. I'd have to look at the language. And, you know, in general, you know, staff supports this concept. I agree with everything Commissioner Simmons said about EVs and engines that stop idling. And I think it's probably time to take another look at this. I'm just not sure what else to look at, and so...
But the language, then, that they suggest you'll pass back to us, it'll come up just like this in a future meeting, right?
There's...
And we can consent calendar if it looks right.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, at this point, I need to work with someone. I don't have language. I'm not sure how to address it. My recommendation was to say that we would balance these things. If we're eliminating them, I'd need to talk with folks about what that would look like. So, that's a long story to say, yes, if there's a change to the language, you'll probably see it, depending on the timelines that it takes to get that language back to you. Certainly, if it's a recommendation of the Planning Commission to change it and not to incorporate what staff has said, then I don't want to commit to you seeing that before the council does. I'm not sure how long it will take. I don't know what's involved.
Okay, well, I think the message is that we would like to see that language addressed. So if you could work on addressing that with staff, and then bring it back to us when you can.
Can I say that I'll work with Commissioner Simmons to...
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's move on to the next item.
Do people want me to make this pitch again, or does everyone remember the pitch I made?
We are just deciding whether to ditch Class 3 and insist on Class 4 bike trails.
Yeah, so the table has a several Class 3 bike, so a Class 3 bike lane is just a shareo in the road, right? There's no actual safety, I mean, I know I'm, but no barrier, no painted lane for you, right? Yeah.
Yeah, it's not separated. And the places where these are, from staff, excuse me, from staff's point of view, the places where these are useful are on very low-flow roads where you have the opportunity to identify for drivers that this is a shared road, expect to see bikes here. It's an identified bike road. If you don't want to be traveling behind a bike or sharing this road with a bike, then go to another road. And we have these currently on Ninth Street, I'm sorry, J Street, I believe, is one area where they are. Maybe they're on Ninth Street as well. And when Ninth Street is reconfigured, there'll be more space. And when it becomes a one-way, there'll be a designated bike lane there. So I think we're constantly trying to push towards more protected bike lanes where we can, but in areas where we just don't have an option, and yet we still want to identify those as, you know, as shared facilities. We believe that these Class 3 routes are useful for identifying those. And so removing that tool by saying there's no policy support for it, and that it has to be a Class 4, I think may limit where bike trails are installed in the future, was sort of the gist of the discussion that I had with the city engineer. Having said that, you know, fully agree that we want to have the highest level of bicycle and pedestrian facilities that we can have in any of the road networks that we have.
Okay, go ahead, Judith.
Yeah, on this one, surprisingly, I think I agree with David. It provides an option, especially where conditions aren't ideal for our ideal situation. And those types of kind of warnings to automobile drivers in particular are really extensively used in places where bike planning has been particularly successful, like in Portland, where you'll direct people onto a less-traveled street, designate that, and actually provide some alternatives that wouldn't have come up otherwise. And I think that that's a useful tool, even if it's not an ideal one.
So, just so everyone's clear, there's a, like a table in the general plan, pages 2-51 and 2-52, that lists proposed streets where this would happen. And it's, you know, Union Street between 14th and 17th, it's 14th Street from L.K. Wood Boulevard to B Street, and then to Union Street. And so it's not not-traveled roads that are being proposed for this. It's stretches of traveled roads where you don't want to get rid of parking in order to have a protected bike lane, and instead you just put a shareo. And I totally understand that there's a trade-off there. People like parking. But that's not actually what this table indicates we would be doing. It's just having it be side routes.
Could we get the table on the screen?
I can pull that up. What I'd suggest is maybe we come back to this, so I can have the time to pull it up, and then we can carry on the discussion.
Okay, let's move to the next one and circle back to CM 6.
I can't remember who pulled this one off, but add Wunorf to the list of possibilities throughout the city.
I think that was me. I just want some clarification. Obviously, Wunorf's are places where you expect vehicles and humans, including little kids, to share a road without a sidewalk. And they're obviously not appropriate in most of the streets of Arcata. And so I think if we're going to be including Wunorf's as a possibility outside the Gateway areas where they were originally proposed, I think we need to have some very clear standards for where they may be proposed. And without them, I think that that policy is overly broad and premature. So a more appropriate policy might be something like, consider adopting standards for use of Wunorf's, or something like that.
Do we know how it got in here? Where did that phrase?
It got in there from the Gateway. There was one block that was being considered as a Wunorf, and then suddenly it kind of blew out into the rest of the city.
I'll just, in our study sessions with city council, there was also a lot of support for this concept from the city council.
Right. But I think the important thing is to consider it only in a limited number of cases where we actually have some standards for why it could be an acceptable option. So I just propose some language that might work, if you want to stick that in the poll out.
So it's very case-specific?
Yeah. I would say at the policy level that it does an okay job of providing the ability for future projects to be consistent with the general plan, where we decide to put them. I don't think it's necessary to designate a series of standards at this point when we don't know where those Wunorf's are going to be. And I completely agree with what Commissioner Mayor is saying, is that they're certainly not appropriate all over the place. I couldn't tell you the next Wunorf that, you know, that, you know, we have in mind. I know some people would like to see the Plaza Wunorf, or maybe even completely cut off to cars. But there's no, there's nothing in place right now, and so I wouldn't be able to tell you what the features are. So I'd suggest leaving the language the way it is, or the way it's modified to support other Wunorf's throughout the city where they, you know, seem to the wisdom of the decision-makers at that time is the right thing to do.
What, where are people at with this? Leave the language as staff recommended, or make a change for more specificity?
I support the staff. It's just allowing a possibility is not mandating anything.
Yeah, I don't think a Wunorf is going to like appear anywhere without more...
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, that sounds fine.
Let's leave that one. Do you have the materials for the table, so we can circle back to the previous element?
I, I do.
And just a time check, that we're about 15 minutes from wrapping.
Let's fly through these. We're close.
Okay, so the, just to point out that the Class 3 bike routes are specifically designated corridors in which the travel lanes are shared by motor vehicles and bicycles, and are usually marked with on-street pavement stencils. So that's confirming what Commissioner Simmons...
And just, all streets are like that. You can ride a bike on any street in Arcata, even if there's no shareo on it.
That is also true. But designating it with a shareo is special. It gives, you know, it gives it that additional identification. It raises awareness to drivers of motor vehicles that there are bikes here. It puts it more in the culture that bikes are expected and anticipated here. And it helps us with designating those roads. So they don't have no purpose. I don't disagree with the fact that, yeah, you can ride a bike anywhere, and I often do. So here are the Class 3 bike routes that were identified in here, and I believe what the proposal is, Commissioner Simmons, correct me if I'm wrong, is to make these Class 4 instead of Class 3.
Yeah, or at the very least, to really look at this table and think about whether like 14th Street is a not-traveled road, when it's like one of the ways to get through Arcata, right? I, you know, I just want to make sure we're all clear on that.
I have a, I have a quick proposal for the commission, because this table is actually in no way, shape, or form, should it be considered regulatory, and decisions could be made that, you know, would modify this table, which would be somewhat problematic if it was already in the general plan and seemed to have the authority of policy. I'd suggest taking this table out of the general plan, and then having future discussions, you know, where we could incorporate these into, you know, sort of, you know, bike and ped plans, et cetera, where they more probably rightly belong. There was a lot of emphasis that was placed in the circulation element. It is, you know, next to the Gateway Plan, the largest element we have. There's a lot of content in there that maybe, you know, isn't necessarily appropriate for a policy document. So losing this table would not be, would not change the overall effect of the policy, and it would allow us to more flexibly address the concerns that Commissioner Simmons has raised.
Is that acceptable to you, Matt?
Well, so then, another... Well, so then another proposal that we just passed in that tranche was to add Class 4 facilities to this table. And so are we losing... Because I like the Class 4 facilities being called out in the general plan, if I'm being honest. So are we losing those as well?
We're looking for a compromise position here to get through this issue.
And I believe that we have policy that currently identifies that we want to have the highest-class facilities that we, you know, can accommodate. And these are all, you know, project-specific. I think this level of detail in the general plan, when we actually don't have specific projects identified, is also somewhat inappropriate because this starts to look like part of our capital improvement plan, but this is really just, you know, planning at this level. It's not capital improvements.
If we were to delete this table and include a policy saying the updated ped and bike plan will address appropriate locations for each class of bicycle facility or something like that, would that do it? Because ultimately, it is the ped and bike plan that will probably look at the details. And these are actually more implementation-measery types of things. And so I agree with David that removing the table would be good, but there is a planning process in place that will address those issues.
Are we good with removing the table?
Absolutely.
And calling it good?
And the Traffic Safety Committee, isn't that who deals with these things ultimately? Which streets get what?
We also have a couple of implementation measures that I think this concept can be wrapped into, already in the document.
We're in support of removing the table and then calling that a solution to that. Can we look at our next item on our list? And maybe can we just have a little quick check-in about how many total items?
There's just a few more. I think two. Two more in Attachment A, yeah.
Okay.
To get through the main policies that were already in there.
Okay.
So update to reflect the GRTA and, I'm sorry, the North Coast Great Rabbit Trail Agency as opposed to the North Coast Railroad Authority.
And really, what I was looking for was clarification there, which might go beyond this exact policy about what's happening with the Class 1 trail that runs through the L Street Linear Park corridor. Is it going to stay exactly as-is? I know we have a policy that says we won't reduce the length of or the distance of Class 1 trail throughout the city. And we're sticking to that, right? I'm just looking for clarification on all this. And along the Linear Park, is there any chance that it's going to meander a little bit here or there? Or are we pretty locked in on it staying within the rail bed or approximately where it is now?
The policy that you're referring to that called for, you know, essentially no net loss of trails was included to allow for, under, you know, the previous proposal, which had, you know, a KNL street couplet, there would have to be some modifications to the trail clearly there. And then there are a couple of other areas where, you know, segments of trails might be, you know, need to be moved. And so the idea was that we wouldn't lose any of those Class 1 trails in this and that if it was acceptable to move them, to realign them or to relocate them, but that we couldn't lose the connectivity. That's what that policy is about. That's the intent of it, and I believe that's what it identifies. The... Since the L Street couplet, L.K. couplet has been removed from the plan, there's a lot... I don't have anything that I can point to in the plan that would specifically alter any Class 1 trail. There's certainly no capital improvement planned right now to modify that trail. So as far as I know at this point, the existing Class 1 multi-use trail will remain in its current location and its current configuration in perpetuity, you know, until something else If... I still think it's an important policy to keep in the document because if a project does come forward that we don't know about right now that may relate or relocate, rather, you know, that Class 1 trail, we want to make sure that we don't lose the connectivity or that it's rerouted in such a way that makes it ineffective or, you know, anything like that. So this just gives, you know, policy direction where, you know, as we're updating our capital improvement programs, if they address that, that they're covered by that no net loss policy.
I'm content with it all. Just wanted to hear.
Everybody okay with that? Matt? Okay. Thumbs up.
I think that's it.
Looking ahead, I'm hesitant to get into a new block. I think we should agendize these to pick up next, first, at our next meeting.
Absolutely.
Is everyone okay with that? My preference is that it comes up first so that it doesn't get pushed again. Are you tracking this, David?
Yep.
Do you need anything more? Then we'll just pick up here the next time we convene.
That's correct.
Okay. Appreciate everyone's work and agreement and the time to get clear on process. Hope that felt better to everyone. I certainly feel better when I feel like we're all on the same page process-wise. I appreciate the detailed conversations. I'd like to move on to Correspondence and Communications. Do we have any correspondence from Planning Commission members or from staff? There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.